PM, I like. Or this meeting is being recorded. Councilman Ferguson, which mind of invocation, please?
Good evening, everyone. Happy New Year. Father God, we just thank you. We give you the glory and the honor. We just thank you. And say that we are grateful that you have blessed us to enter into a new year. And we thank you for your loving kindness, for your goodness and your mercies that are new every morning. And we ask for Jesus that you be in the midst of this meeting, that you would, uh, that we would operate in wisdom. And your understanding, Father God, and in peace, Father God, we ask that you would just bless the citizens of the city. And all the participants of this meeting in Jesus' name. Amen. Amen.
Amen. Madam Clerk, would you do the roll call, please?
Sure. Excuse me, Councilwoman Fareed. Councilwoman Guillaume.
Here.
Councilwoman Hairston. Councilwoman Herring. Councilman Herring, you're muted. Councilwoman Jones.
Here.
Council Vice President Ferguson.
Here.
And Council President Curtis.
Here.
You do have a quorum.
Thank you. I saw that, uh, Mr. Herring, Councilman Herring was here. We have some technical difficulty, so. Hopefully you can join back soon.
All right.
Okay, uh, we have a quorum and, uh, we'll move on with the agenda. Uh, first, uh, is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
Elmo.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, Madam Clerk.
Councilwoman Guillaume.
Yes.
I don't see.
Oh, I said, yes.
Okay, yes, I'm sorry. I heard you. I apologize. Councilman Herring hasn't gotten back on yet. Councilwoman Jones?
Yes.
Councilman Herring, we're approving the agenda. Councilman Herring, we're approving the agenda. May I have your vote?
Second.
Okay. Vice President, okay, Vice President Ferguson?
Yeah.
And President Curtis?
Yes.
Uh, Councilman Hairston has just joined us as well.
Okay. So for record, Councilman Herring and Councilman Hairston are here. And generally, we just voted on the, uh, vote to accept the agenda. So with that, since it's been approved. We'll move on, uh, to the first item on the agenda, which are the, um, past meeting minutes from November fifth, November fifteenth, November twenty ninth, and December the fifth. Uh, they're all in your packets. Uh, it will be up for vote for approval with our regular meeting later this month. Moving on to presentations, I'm handing over to uh, our first presentation up is Mr., um, is the Opera Project Manager, Thomas and Michael LLC. Uh, City Manager, Bryant, if you want to do the intro- introduction.
Uh, yes, good evening, everyone. Happy New Year. Um, we have two contractors we'd like to, uh, address the council and the community tonight in reference to a grant. Uh, the first one will be the Opera Contractor. Um, and that'd be Tom Himmler, if he's on.
All right, thank you, Chief. Uh, good, good evening, everybody. Um, my name is Thomas Himmler, managing member of, uh, Thomas Michael LLC. Would it be possible to share a screen, uh, Mr. Chair? For the presentation?
Yes, um, Madam Clerk, could you see to it that it's unlocked? Is it unlocked?
Not yet.
One second. All right, uh, Mr. Himmler, you can try it now.
Yep. Alrighty. Um, thank you. Hopefully y'all can see that. Again, thank you. It's a privilege to be here this evening to, uh, tell a little bit about our firm and, uh, and what we've been doing to help a number of cities and towns in particular. Uh, in Maryland with the American Rescue Plan Act. Again, uh, for record, my name is Thomas, uh, Himmler. I'm the managing member of Thomas Michael LLC. Uh, just a little bit about us, we're a Prince George's County-based certified, uh, county-based small business. We're located in Greenbelt, Maryland. We've been, uh, in existence since, uh, twenty eighteen. And one of our main themes is, is, is we like to live by is a quote by Theodore Levitt, which is creativity is thinking up new things. But innovation is doing new things. So when we work with clients, whether it be local governments, whether it be the private sector. Uh, you know, we want to help them be creative, but but also innovative at the same time. Uh, so that's kind of the mantra that our firm uses on approach on every project. Little bit about our experience, um, we have our thirty-one years of, of providing solutions in both the public sector and private sector. Uh, uh, twenty-three years at both the state level, um, and, and local government experience, including numerous years at the senior executive level in some, uh, very large, uh, governments in particular. Uh, we bring eight years of experience, um, in, in, in the private sector. Little bit of, uh, expertise that we bring is in a number of these areas you see here. I'm not going to list them all, but budget and fiscal, uh, public policy, government operations and procedures, economic and community development in particular. But also to have a vast experience in procurement as, as well, and in program development and, and implementation, which are critical in, uh, spending the American Rescue Plan Act funds. We try to focus as a, as a firm on, on three, three main major areas, uh, budgetary and fiscal matters, public policies and procedures, and then economic development and community development. Under budgetary and fiscal matters, um, and all three of these, we found, um, have been helpful with our clients and, and, and spending American Rescue Plan Act, uh, funds. Under budgetary and fiscal, uh, we assist governments in developing and implementing some management, fiscal management policies, practices, uh, and, and big ones been developing and implementing new programs and services, developing spending plans, et cetera. Um, under public policy, we, we, we have a lot of experience in assisting uh, governments in adopting and implementing new laws, policies, best practices, and so forth to, to improve their operations of, of their government. And then lastly, um, we have a tremendous amount of experience in economic development and community development, both at the local government level, but also working with private sector clients. Um, and, and, and especially in the Maryland DC area. Uh, there, we, we've been successful in helping communities attract and retain jobs. Uh, expand, um, their, their, their commercial tax base, residential tax base. And as it relates to ARPA, we've been brought that experience to help a number of our clients, you know, figure out how they can use maybe some of these funds to improve. Uh, as it comes to, uh, community development, project shopping centers and those kind of things, or and or helping businesses who have been negatively impacted by, uh, the, the pandemic. As far as our experience with, uh, federal COVID nineteen funds, we really have since day one of, 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 uh, COVID nineteen, when the federal government, uh, enacted the CARES Act. We've been very active, um, with our clients and, and, and ever since that happened in, 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 in March of twenty twenty. Uh, but also too, we have experience working with the, the, the one that a lot of people forget about, which is the Consolidated Appropriation Act of twenty twenty-one. That was really the second COVID stimulus that was adopted really at the end of calendar year twenty twenty. And then obviously the American Rescue Plan Act, which is, uh, what we're primarily, uh, want to focus on, uh, this, this evening. Uh, on all of our, uh, American Rescue Plan Act and COVID, uh, federal funds, uh, I, I've been the engagement lead. Just a little bit about myself, I bring thirty-one years of experience in public finance, executive management, government operations, and public policy. Uh, since COVID started, uh, I've been, uh, working on with clients that have received over five hundred twenty million dollars in federal funds, uh, since, since that March of twenty twenty, when the federal government started providing funds to local governments. Uh, bring extensive amount of experience in both state and local government. My experience, um, goes from the Maryland General Assembly many, many years ago to working for Baltimore City um, in the late nineties, and then, uh, substantial amount of experience in Prince George's County under three county executives, uh, from, uh, Mr. Curry to Mr. Johnson to Mr. Baker. And then also I've been doing work for the Also Brooks administration as a, as a consultant as well. Um, during my time, I, I've served as the Chief Financial Officer uh, of one of the largest counties in the United States. He oversaw four billion dollar operating, annual operating budget, five billion dollar capital improvement program. And oversaw about hundred sixty million dollars a year in grants with a substantial amount of that being federal, uh, federal funding. But again, as I mentioned previously, have extensive experience on government contracting and procurement. And then, as you can see in the last bullet, uh, very substantial amount of experience in economic development and community development with over thirteen billion dollars in public and private sector projects over the last, uh, past decade. As far as some of the, the type of work that we've been doing to help our, 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 uh, local government clients with, uh, spending federal funds related to COVID. Um, uh, kind of varies by each of our, each of our ten clients, but, but here's this is a sampling of, of, of what we've done and, and do, and some of these we do multiple for, for each of our clients. Is we've had heavy involvement in assisting our clients in developing spending plans. Um, including just, you know, helping, helping our clients brainstorm a, a, a variety of ideas. Um, obviously with federal funds, there's a lot of compliance and reporting requirements, so we have assisted our clients in guiding them to make sure they comply with all the federal rules, the federal reporting requirements. We've also developed program applications guidelines for a number of, of variety of programs from uh, rental assistance to mortgage assistance, to utility assistance programs, uh, small business assistance programs. Even, uh, basically cash assistance programs to targeted, uh, households and, and, and some of the localities that, that we serve. Um, we also just also monitor and, 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 and help, uh, interpret, uh, federal roles uh, to make sure that, that our clients are all up to speed, uh, uh, in compliance with the, with the guidelines that are issued. Um, uh, also uh, keep them abreast of any other updates, changes that may, that may occur. Um, also, we help our clients, once you get the plan, to help you successfully implement them, because a lot of times it's, you know, especially with smaller governments, it's from a staff standpoint, it's hard sometimes for them to be able to transition from developing the plan and adopting a plan to implementation. And so we've, we've served as, uh, pro- project managers for a number of our clients to try to help them, you know, make sure their projects are getting done in a timely fashion. Um, and, um, that's just kind of a flight, a little bit of flavor of what we have done with our, with our clients. Uh, here's a list of our, our ten clients, not going to name them all. You can see their, their seals, but it's um, uh, on both eastern shore, southern Maryland, and of course, uh, in Prince George's County. Uh, we serve a number of your sister, uh, cities and, and, and towns, and we, and we have done so for, for, uh, a couple of years in, in, in most of these clients' cases. So in summary, you know, we, we want to, you know, uh, again, we bring a lot of experience, we're creative, we're innovative, but also we're trusted by a number of local governments, um, as attested by, you know, over five hundred twenty million dollars of our, of federal funds, uh, governments have entrusted us to help guide them on. And so just in closing, uh, before I open up for questions, again, thirty-one years of experience in both public and private sector, so, so I, I've lived your life for many, many years in the public sector and know how to, uh, develop and implement plans and, and get them, uh, moving and get, and see results. And, um, again, we just look forward to appreciate the opportunity to, to potentially assist the city and spending and, and investing your, your little over four million dollars of federal ARPA funds. So with that, uh, Mr. Chair, we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Himmler. Uh, I'll open the floor to the council for any questions. Are there any questions? Uh, Councilwoman Jones?
I just have one question, sir. Uh, thank you so much for your presentation. You covered just about everything that I wanted to ask questions concerning. But I do have this one question for the city of Glen Arden and for yourself. Uh, as our, um, Opera Specialist, you'll have a point of contact. Will that just be the city manager, or did you want for all of the council to weigh in, or? How would the chain of command go?
I mean, generally, just so that it, 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 it helps us, you know, keep focused. We generally, through all our clients, there's a one point of contact, and then we kind of work through that person. Obviously, we have a lot of interaction with, you know, mayors and, and council members as we talk about plans and those kind of things, so. Uh, but generally, we prefer to kind of deal directly with through one person, but it, but we've, we've gotten, you know, uh, you know, requests from, from elected officials within our, our, um, our, our clients saying, hey, what, you know, as far as, you know, how's this program running, that kind of thing, but, but usually it's, we try to funnel it through one person, um, Ms. Jones.
All right, sir. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions from the council? Mayor Cross.
Thank you for the presentation. And, uh, just a quick question, did we get a cost for your services? Did that, did you outline the cost for the services?
In our, in, uh, what we submitted to the, uh, Acting City Manager, we did. I think it's also part of the, um, agenda, but basically we have, uh, we set a, a, a maximum contract value of a hundred and eight thousand over a twenty-four month period. Um, it's, it's three hundred dollars an hour. So once we, you know, you know, in that twenty-four month window, if, you know, we, 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 we eat up all that, the hit the maximum, we'll keep, we'll keep providing services during that twenty-four month period. It's a similar rate that we, we have used, um, and, um, uh, to, uh, competitive proposal that we went through a process with the city of Hydesville a couple of years ago. They, they put out a solicitation and, and they were awarded us that contract, their contract as well, and, and we use that same rate with, um, La Plata as well, um, for, for their services as well, uh, Madam Mayor.
So I just so I'm clear, that equates to four thousand five hundred dollars a month.
Well, it depends on how many hours, yeah, it depends on how many hours we work, but it's, it's a bill, it's an hourly billable contract, so whenever we hit that contract max, you know, we, we, we won't bill you anymore. We'll keep working during the twenty-four month period if we happen to hit it during that, during that window of time. But it won't be, uh, it'll, it'll be based on the hours that we work.
And, and we are required by contract to enter into a twenty-four month contract.
That's, um, you're not required to. That's, that's what we have found with a number of our clients. That's their preference, given that, you know, um, with the level of work that's involved and, and in a timeframe where we're at now. Because the, in the case of the city with the federal rules, you have to obligate a hundred percent of your funds basically in the next two calendar years. So by the end of calendar year twenty-four, you have to have a hundred percent of your funds obligated. Otherwise, the federal government will claw it back, claw it back what's not obligated. And then you have two more years after that to spend it, but what we have found with almost all of our clients is, is our, our clients are trying to spend actually a hundred percent of the money by the end of calendar year twenty-four. Uh, just because one, it's, you know, they're trying to do as much in your community as possible during that, during that period of time.
Thank you so much. And was there a three bid for this, uh, contract, City Manager Bryant? Our sole source?
Uh, it was a sole source referral from, um, I've fallen up on the contact from the, um, prior city manager. Um, she, she referred the information to me, and, uh, I was acting upon that information I received.
This is the first time working, so we do not have three bids for the city of Glen Arden. Thank you.
Hmm. And just on that note, uh, uh, Madam Mayor and the others, um, you do have a provision under your charter, uh, where you can essentially, um, ride another government's contract who's, um, went through a competitive process. Um, as long as it's for similar type of services under your section, um, eight eighteen, I think it is of the charter. So that is an option for the city, should they choose, um, um, that as well, that, that, that you could essentially ride like city of Hydesville's contract, um, and we can be more than happy to give a copy to the city manager, Acting City Manager, if he wants to see that, that formal solicitation that they had put out as well.
That, that'd be great. Thank you.
Yeah. That had not standard practice.
Mayor Cross. If you'd like to speak, please notice the chair. The chair will notice you, and then you can speak. But you cannot go out of order and just speak, please. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Himmler.
You're welcome.
Mr. President.
I'm sorry. I heard, I think, two people at the same time. Mr. Herring?
Yeah, I just wanted to, I just wanted to make a comment that that is what we've been doing for years, following section eight eighteen of our charter to you've been piggybacking on contracts for years, so there shouldn't be an issue with that at all, so I just wanted to clear that up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Chief Bryant?
I just wanted to thank Mr. Himmler. If there are not any more questions, I'd like to thank you for his presentation. Um, and, uh, look forward to talking to him, and I'll be in contact with you. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Chief, and, and thank you, everybody, for the, the opportunity to speak to y'all tonight.
Council President, may I real quickly? I'm sorry. Uh, this won't take long.
Yeah, uh, Councilman, uh, Guillaume?
Sure. I just wanted to also echo the sentiment of the Acting City Manager and say thank you to Mr. Himmler. I'm very impressed with what you had to offer or what you have to offer, and I do echo the sentiments of my, um, colleague, I believe, who just spoke before I did, um, I believe it was Ms., um, Councilman Herring, and what you also said, Count, um, Mr. Himmler. If, um, citizens who are listening on this call, um, if you have access to the Charter, section eight one eight C, to be exact, is what we referenced. Again, it's section eight one eight C, and it talks about the contractual process forbidden. Thank you.
So, Ms. Himmler, thank you for your presentation, and you should be hearing from us shortly.
All right. Well, thank you. Y'all have a great night.
All right, you too.
Thanks.
Uh, Chief Bryant, do you want to do the next introduction for?
Yes, um, we have, um, Mr. John O'Connor, uh, he specializes in, uh, police grants, um, for several municipalities, uh, in the area. Um, and if he's on, um, I'd like to introduce, uh, Mr. John O'Connor to you.
Mr. O'Connor, thank you for joining us.
Thank you, Mr. President, Mayor, Council, and, uh, Chief. I appreciate the, uh, opportunity. Um, a little bit about myself, I've been in government for about twenty-three years now, uh, seven years service in the military and served as a law enforcement officer and, uh, spent two terms as a county commissioner for St. Mary's County. Uh, and, uh, managing a budget of three hundred eighty-three million and schools, full-service sheriff's department, as well as, uh, funding the state's attorney's office. Um, during my time, I, I started writing grants and, uh, over the last four or five years, I've successfully, uh, got seven point five million dollars in awarded grants for a, uh, local jurisdiction, uh, neighboring yours right there in Prince George's County. Uh, one of the grants was for, uh, seventeen police officers for three point six four million, and the other one was for one point six million for twelve police officers, as well as hundreds of thousands of dollars located within that from Governor's Office of Crime Control and Prevention. Uh, specialized in, uh, policies and procedures for local law enforcement and helping to, uh, bring them up to current standards as a part of those, uh, that process. I met with the chief and explained to him that, you know, these grants would be extremely beneficial to the agency, which he was already aware of. And, uh, I would be more than happy to, uh, bring that, that expertise that I have from grant writing and the awards to the city of Glen Arden. Especially recognizing, uh, in, in these tough times of recruiting and retaining police officers, it's, it's very important when the overall cost is in turnover of a law enforcement officer is about a hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars every time you lose a police officer. Uh, whether it's their vehicle, equipping them, training them, and then the experience that goes with it. So these grants can help, uh, secure your police officers that are with you and hopefully keep them for the, uh, long run, as well as defer some of the costs into your operating budget. Which I know it's huge when you're sitting in budget season and trying to figure out the budget, budget process, and when it comes to either equipment raises or you're going to allocate new positions. So, uh, with that, I, I bring, uh, multitude years of experience writing these grants, and, uh, I look forward to answering any questions that, uh, the Mayor Council you may have related to, uh, this process.
Thank you, Mr. O'Connor. Are there any questions from the council?
Yes, uh, Mr. President.
Councilman Herring?
Yes, uh, I, I don't know, I may, might have heard it, I might not have heard it. So where do you, where are majority of your grants secured from? Federal, state, local?
Uh, it's federal, state, and local. Um, the two major grants were from Department of Justice, the cops hiring grant. Um, a lot of the other grants were from USDA or the Governor's Office of Crime Control and Prevention.
And these are like, uh, a lot of the grants are like designated and that, they're not just, you know, public safety grants, you can spend them on anything in public safety. They got to be designated for specific, uh, items such as employed, um, such as, uh, police officers or building or whatever, cars or whatever.
So it depends on the grant, um, when you write the grant and what's in the notice of funding availability. They'll tell you, so like the Burn Justice Memorial Grant, that allows you to access police technology for computers, radios, tasers, body cameras. Um, or you might have the Gun Violence Reduction Grant. And, and that's specifically for overtime for police officers to go ahead and fight, uh, the gun violence epidemic and community education. So really rely on the notice of funding availability. Uh, Department of Justice Cops Hiring Grant Program, that's specifically for hiring and retaining police officers or rehiring police officers that might have been laid off. Um, the nice thing about that DOJ program is they'll pay for the police officer salaries for the first three years.
Okay. Um, and another question I, when submitting these grants, what is a major, uh, component that we have to submit with a grant say? But, uh, financial reports, budgets, or, or?
So it depends on the grant. Yeah, it, it depends on the grant, but there's, uh, of course, the annual audit is important with anything with the Governor's Office of Crime Control and Prevention, you have to submit your audits. Um, you know, state aid for police protection, you're going to want to see the financials that are associated with your public safety, your automated enforcement program, or any expenditures to overall public safety. Um, for the Department of Justice Cops Grant, there's no actual financials that need to be submitted, but substantiating information for your population and or your service population that the police department is actually serving. So it could vary from grant to grant. There are some where you may need, uh, your financial forecasts or cash match in some instances, but they're very rare with, uh, the Governor's Office of Crime Control and Prevention that need to have a cash match.
Okay. And one of the things, so what, uh, uh, what is the, let's say, active period for submitting now these applications? Is it like around October, September, October, the third quarter, fourth quarter? What? Do you know? Have an idea?
So, yes, and most of the time, you're, you're looking that the grants open up in May, and the submittals will be for the new fiscal year in July. However, there are some that are on a rotating basis throughout the year, and they will pop up, such as K-9 Grants may open up, you know, Q four. Uh, whereas the cops grants, Q three, and, uh, they accept it Q four and they award it Q one. Um, so it, it, it can vary, but the, the bulk of your grants, you're usually going to see pop up prior to the beginning of the next fiscal year, because it's going to be pushed into the, uh, the funding process, and that's when the funds are released in the overall state budget. So Governor's Office of Crime Control and Prevention has the federal side, and they'll trickle the money down from the feds in some instances, like the, uh, Bully Bulletproof, uh, Best Partnership Program.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Herring. Are there any other questions from the council? All right, um, with that, Mr. O'Connor. Thank you very much.
All right, Mr. President. Thank you very much for your time, and I appreciate you, uh, having the support of the council.
Thank you. And you should be hearing from the active, uh, Chief Bryant, uh, in the near future. Thank you, and you should be hearing from the active uh Chief Bryant uh in the near future.
Thank you, sir. Have a nice evening.
All right, thank you.
Sorry, not acting chief Brian, acting city manager Brian.
Understand.
Okay, um. Next up is legislation. We'll move on to legislation, uh, zero dash zero three dash twenty twenty-three ordinance to amend. Uh, subsection one forty-nine dash twenty-two one-one, commercial vehicle parking restrictions. Um, Councilman Herron, I know this is uh your legislation, or we've pushed it back, are we? Uh, I'm still working on this, or did you want to address this today?
Counsel. Um, yeah, I mean, I looked at it and um. I guess my issue is that, I mean, I don't, I'm not seeing what the issue is with that. I mean, I know that maybe some concern with some citizens in the community that have commercial vehicles, you know, but. I mean, I just see a bigger issue with the residents in this community that need to park their cars and have people come. And people who come visit and being able to park their cars and not have these um commercial vehicles and trailers taking up space on these streets. And not allowing residential parking. Um, I mean, when I walked into the Christmas party, that's one of the first things some of the seniors hit me with, what are you going to do about parking? What are you going to do about parking? So I mean, I see it as a major issue and I really don't feel there's anything in it should really be changed. I really don't. I think that, you know, this, you know. I mean, I got to go for the broader, broader community when it comes down to this uh commercial parking and uh. People being able to park at their um. Park in front of the house, be able to park in the neighborhood, you know, and be able to have people come visit them and I have to walk a whole block up the street because there's. These tons of vehicles out here that's parked on the street because we have parked in driveways and it got personal parts parked on the streets. This is residential community, not a commercial community, so. I mean, I don't see, I don't, I don't really feel that uh change needs to be made on it. You know, I mean, we all have to uh. Now somebody, everybody got to make sacrifices for the greater good of the community.
Thank you, Mr. Herron. Uh, so, you know, with that, we'll make sure that it's on the regular um session uh this month for vote.
Okay, thanks.
Actually, I'm sorry, before, are there any um? Do I go at the city manager, Brian? Did you have a question on that?
Uh, yes, just real quick, um, I've been working code enforcement and we've been working with um. Three commercial, large commercial vehicles in particular um that we've been getting complaints about. We were able to reach out to all three of those individuals and um advise them. And one individual, uh, he's been ticked several times, so we took it a step further. And contacted his company he worked for, so um we eradicated that problem with them parking in the city and, you know, um. Once they're aware that we're aware of what they're doing and we address them, um, we've been, we've been able to um. Address a lot of concerns, because I got a couple of phone calls in reference to uh. Two of the vehicles in particular, and uh we were able to act on those, so uh hopefully the community sees some improvement. Um, with the commercial vehicles in the area. And I'd like to thank the the council members uh who've been in contact with me and making sure that we uh address these concerns and these wards, so I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Councilman Jones.
Uh, yes, Chief, I noticed that that one, this one vehicle that comes periodically. And they came back during the uh holiday season. And in fact, I saw the vehicle. It wasn't parked on Glen Arden Parkway, but it was parked in the church parking lot now. And then there's another one that's parked in the, at night, they park in the laundromat parking lot, big yellow truck.
Right, the the one you're talking about in the church parking lot, that we spoke with on Saturday. Um, so he's aware that he can't park in the city of Glen Arden. Um, I don't even think he had permission to park at the church parking lot, in which he can anyway. Um, so that's the one person we're talking about in particular um with the yellow vehicle. Um, I don't know the color of the vehicle, but I think that's the one also Matthews, um. Keisha Matthews working on for me, so it might be one of the same, but I'll follow up on that with for you. And but we we are aware of these vehicles, because like I said, I did get some calls on it in reference to it, so I wanted to follow up and make sure we addressed those concerns.
Yeah, and the other thing was when we um, when um. Chief O'Brien was uh the chief, uh former chief. We had uh enforcement issues where the city would enforce the commercial parking issue. But when they went to court, uh, the judge would throw it out because the uh. Resolution that we had or the i- the issue that we, oh my goodness, hmm, sorry about that. The issue that we had. Wasn't enough to charge the um, the person, so. Um, we're going to have to come up with something that's going to be able to stick in court. In order to, you know, once you give them a ticket and they go to court, the judge threw, he was throwing them out because we just didn't have enough. Uh, in our resolution or in our uh code to say that um these persons were in violation.
Right, yeah, I I was advised of that and um I was talking to Cole, um. I reached out to D-Pie in reference to that, but I haven't had a chance to follow up. Um, with Cole from D-Pie from Prince George's County. So um, that's one of the things I'm looking at, because um the officers were frustrated in reference to that, responded down, getting kicked out.
Right, and then uh there's also, I think, three tractor trailers that have been parked across from the liquor store on Bright Seat Road. On that side that they're parking on, they are in Glen Arden, they are not in Landover, so. Those also need to be addressed.
Yes. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Are there any other questions from the council?
Uh, Mr. President, I do want to address one of the issues. I'm in in like uh Councilman Jones say, we were having, we had a number of issues with this. Legislation is that, I mean, as the municipal government, we can say, what can it, can I be parked in the, in the, in the city? But the problem was the judge kept on referring back to the county and what they consider a commercial vehicle. Um, also, it was something about our ticket books, the way they were written, it was missing something in the books, I think that was supposed to have been corrected. That they were supposed to check off in a book when they wrote the ticket, so the tickets didn't basically address the issue at hand. But that's why I wanted to bring this legislation, because it's it's commercial equipment, not commercial vehicle. So now the judge cannot say, well, it doesn't meet the commercial vehicle requirements. Well, when I looking at commercial vehicles, we're saying commercial equipment, which was what we can designate as a municipal government. As not being able to be allowed on our residential streets, so that's where we're trying, that's where I'm trying to go with this piece of legislation. So just get some clarification in that.
Yes, sir.
All right, thanks.
Thank you, Councilman Harry. Councilman Miguel.
Thank you, Council President. Sorry I'm speaking so low, everyone. Hopefully you all can hear me. Um, I have heard both sides of this uh particular issue, because I have heard similar to um. To what she, what acting city manager and um other council members have stated. I've heard um some citizens say that they need parking for their guests, but I've also heard the other side, which is, and and actually seen the other side as well. Where there are citizens who actually work for a living and they need those trucks. And I think one of the issues for them as well is. They ca- even if they put the vehicle, that one vehicle in their driveway. They still can get ticketed, or, you know, they still can't do that. And so, meaning they still can't have their mode of um employment, which is what this vehicle is. To um, to even be put in their driveway. So when I start, when we start looking at all of this, the reason why it it's. I I wish there was a compromise of some sort. I don't know what that compromise is, I'll put it out there. But I wish there was a compromise of some sorts, because, you know, Glen Arden, in my opinion, is uh, it is, it's. Meant for people to work as well. It's it's a workman, worker, men, worker women, um. City where people make a livelihood and they pay their bills and their mortgage. And I would hate that, you know, people who have been working for their companies, I believe we even had a citizen speak at one of the public hearings. I would hate for someone who has been paying and providing for their families for years. And specifically, I I'll I'll go as far as saying, um. Would the Woodmore Town Center section of 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 Glen Arden and and some other streets in Glen Arden where the streets are a little wider. There has been more of a outcry of why is this legislation happening, right? Um, but then I've also gone on Fisk Avenue and 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 other streets and Ward One. Where there, where people are pushing for this form of legislation, the streets are narrower. So, again, I have to look at both sides. I, and again, I'm not proposing that I know what the answer is. I'm just saying that I wish there was a compromise. Because if people start losing their mode of employment, they lose their homes. Then what happens to foreclosure rates and what does that do for the city? And what image does that leave for the city as well? Are we more so focusing on parking versus livelihood? And again, I'm not saying anything, I'm just putting it out there that I wish there was a compromise. Because I have to look at both sides of the equation and I understand both, but that's the um conundrum from them. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Gill. Councilwoman Jones?
Uh, yeah, to piggyback off of Councilwoman Gill, also, we have to take in consideration. That the city of Glen Arden, when I, when my family moved here, most of the people that lived in the city of Glen Arden or the type of work that we were seeing being done. Were school teachers, federal blue collar workers, so everybody had a car. Uh, there's two businesses that I can re- recall. Uh, I remember um uh Mister Smallwood had a lawn service. So he had uh uh different type of employment, so I I don't know where he stored his trucks, but I know that he was in a different type of employment. But most of the uh citizens at that time were um federal government employees or school teachers or uh of the like. So you didn't see too many commercial vehicles. And when you say commercial vehicle, you have to think about the weight. The two vehicles that I spoke of were huge, almost not tractor trailer size. But they were huge vehi- hu- huge commercial vehicles with the company name on one of them. And the other one doesn't have a company name, but they're huge. So you would not have that type of vehicle in the community. But most of the vehicles that we're talking about, even that Councilwoman Gill talks about on Fisk Avenue, most of those are pickup trucks with uh uh additional equipment on them. So and when you say equipment, commercial equipment, you're talking about, um, to me, you're talking about Bobcats, you're talking about um. Uh, trailers, even though trailers, you have to, has has to be a certain uh weight, like over ten thousand pounds. Before it's considered not uh as a commercial vehicle. So you can see some trailers in the city, uh, I see these trails. It has to be a certain weight class uh before you can uh consider that a commercial vehicle. So just to say equipment, uh, what kind of equipment are we talking about? I mean, if you're talking about a, a a pickup truck that just has ladders on it or uh the person has some uh uh stuff on it. I mean, the weight class for that is still going to be a pickup truck. You can have a pickup truck in the city of Glen Arden. So those are the things that we have to consider also when we talk about having a commercial parking vehicle restriction uh code. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Herron, um, did you want to respond to the equipment piece?
Yes, let me, let me say this, and that's the problem that we're having right now, is that people are interpreting this law their own way. Our code says any tractor trailer, any tractor, any trailer, doesn't give a weight restriction on trailers. Trailers are not supposed to be in a city period, no matter what the weight restriction is. And Chief O'Donnell was really good at getting them out of the city. And now they're back in, and we had no issues with them coming out of the city because, and we had no issues with them being ticketed, because again. The county doesn't even have a code for trailers. We have a right to say what we can and cannot have in it in the city. Again, commercial equipment is a commercial equipment. You ride on Hayes Street or some of these other streets or uh uh of Fisk Avenue. This one house has four pickup trucks. And 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 it, it it has two in the driveway, two on the street, and then it got the personal cars parked on a um, on a street also. And that isn't fair to the other residents. They're parking in front of other people's houses, you know, so. A commercial vehicle is, i- if they're not using it for their daily use, do you know that's a commercial vehicle? Pickup truck with ladders and all this other stuff on there, that's a, they're using it for commercial purposes. You know, and I don't think it's fair to residents who have caregivers that come out, they can't, they can't park in front of their house, who have family members that come out. That's the guy that I seen, especially in my world, we have a lot of seniors. That they gotta walk a block to get to their house, because somebody, one house got four pickup trucks and commerce and 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 their own vehicles. You know, it isn't fair to them when this is a residential neighborhood. If you want to run a, run a business, that's the overhead, that's the cost of overhead, the door on business is storing your equipment somewhere. You know, and there's a place right down the street here that 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 let you rent a parking space, you know, to store your equipment. Uh, I mean, it is, I mean, I I'm not seeing what the issue is here when it comes down to citizens needing. Adequate parking for their guests and for themselves. You know, um, again, the trailers, I see these trailers all over the neighborhood, which should not be in the neighborhood, because the code is quite clear. Any, it doesn't say, don't get no, don't get no weight restriction, because there is no weight restriction when it comes to track and to comes to trailers. And then the city of Glen Arden, we didn't put a great restriction on, and that's why they wait, that's why Chief O'Donnell was able to get them out of the city. And he would tow them out of the city if they were in here. So, you know, um. You know, I mean, I understand people have jobs and people have this and people have that, but you know, I mean. I also understand that there's people that's living here, who's who's been living here all their lives and they can't have the luxury and have a quality of life to allow somebody to come. Visit them or a family member come visit them if I have an apartment all the way down and around the corner. Because one house decides they want to run a business out of their home and have, which is again, a violation of uh city code. Um, and they're going to have, take up a majority of the street, and they don't have no consideration for their neighbors, and that's the biggest issue I had. No consideration, they'll park back that vehicle in front of any house that they feel they want to park it in, and they will tell you, it's a public street, I can park away, I want to park it. And I don't see them, and I don't see anybody speaking up for these residents out here who's saying that that's not right. But yet you, we're going to speak up for people who's coming in and just basically bog on and taking over the streets. We've never had this issue before. People were enabling, people considered each other, people considered their neighbors, they wouldn't park in front of their house, that's not what's happening now. People just like, I I got it, I'm going to use it and I got to park my car. People, people have driveways down and they park their cars in the street to keep people from parking in front of their house. And that's not, that's terrible. That's absolutely horrible. So. I I don't, I'm not seeing the issue, I see the, I see the big issue when it comes down to our residents. And I'm 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 looking at the majority of the residents, not just a few selects that, you know, may have a business. If you have a business, you have to pay to overhear to to run your business. You know, that's that's, that's the price you pay, so. Not trying to be insensitive or anything, but I also know when I walk into a Christmas party, they enjoy myself and the first thing he sees that hit me with is, what you going to do about parking on my street? Grand Drive especially, you know, I can't get up and down my street, I can't do this, I can't do that, I can't have people visit me, you know, and on Fifth Street and Hayes Street. I mean, that's a problem for me, because that's on their mind. So, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mayor Cross.
Thank you, Council President. So we just signed an ordinance where there are permits to be issued for houses, particularly in areas that are more congested. Uh, can we not utilize that permitting process for the cars, the vehicular traffic? And then for those that have work vehicles, they utilize their own driveway. Uh, that way you preserve uh two spots in front of each house. And if they have a commercial vehicle, it goes into the driveway, which is just impeding them and their garage. But uh, I offer that as an alternative. That way uh the citizens are supported uh properly, uh visitors as well. Uh, those that utilize this as their work source.
Thank you, Mayor Cross, and Chief Bryant.
Yeah, real quick, um, that's, that's a good alternative for, from the mayor, um, in reference to um Councilmember Gill. Um. In reference to the large vehicles that uh Councilmember Jones and I were speaking of, they're pretty large vehicles. So like I said, we did speak with those individuals with these large, extra-large vehicles. And we did offer alternatives uh to these individuals, like um, there's a place they can park on Hubbard Road. And the one guy with the um, the big truck with the writing of the company name on the side, we gave him an alternative. To park, he is an area not far from where he parks on Prince George's County side, where he can legally park. So he was aware of that, so we not only um, we tried to give them warnings, but there's one particular guy. Um, we had to write him um several um citations for him to get the message. And so we did talk to him, so now he's complying um with our directives, um following the code. But uh, yeah, when we talk to him, I do talk to the guys and try to make sure they give him some alternatives um. To make the city, you know, um, a fair place uh for all individuals. So we, we do that, we just don't give them the tickets and don't give them any, you know, try to assist them, so they are doing that, so I appreciate the questions and concerns.
Okay, thank you, Chief Bryant, and. All right, the last two comments go to uh Gill and then Ferguson, and then we'll move on to the next topic. Uh, Councilman Gill.
Thank you, Council President. I also want to um say that I am in agreement with. I also want to, um, say that I am in agreement with Councilwoman Jones and Councilman Herring and also, um, Acting City Manager Chief Bryant. I do agree as far as the tractor trailer is concerned, that those, to me, those things are huge. Um, I was more so thinking about the smaller ones, the smaller, um, commercial vehicles that would be attributed to more mom and pop-ish as, for lack of better, um, phrase or words. I also, so, so thank you for remedying that, A- Acting City Manager. And I, I do want to also say that while it's, it was quickly mentioned, I do think that there is room for exploration maybe, um, for what the mayor suggested. Um, or recommended, I should say. And lastly, I do think that one of the main issues right now that has caused this is when we think about the origin or, or how the city of Glen Arden was, right? With, um, particularly around Ward one and two, we know that they, you know, it's correct residential, single family mostly. But what I feel is the issue right now is more of a lot of the homes, particularly in the congested, um, what, what I would call congested streets. A lot of those homes have rooms that are being rented out. So, you know, it's no longer that single family home where you had a particular family that just stayed there. You have now people, you know, this particular family's grandparents, I'm sorry, grandchildren, who have taken over, who are now renting, you know, the, the house out to probably four or five different individuals or families themselves, and they themselves have all these different vehicles and it causes a lot of congestion. So that, that's something within itself that has gotten us to this point right now because the actual makeup of the city has transformed a lot in some of the parts that were mu- much older than the newer developed, um, parts of the city. I, um, I do think that, you know, i- i- it is egregious, in my opinion, it is egregious to have four or five, you know, vehicles, of course, but that goes to what I just said, to have four or five commercial vehicles, you know, from one household, you know, parking everywhere. But I do think that's where, again, if there's a compromise of some sorts where no more than two commercial vehicles in a household or what, you know, again, I don't know what that number is, but I just wouldn't want to be draconian and penalize good, hardworking people, you know, over the misusage of being neighborly by others. So that's it.
Thank you, Councilwoman Gill. Councilwoman Ferguson?
Yes, good evening. Um, I pretty much basically was gonna, uh, speak on the topics that, um, Councilwoman Gill, uh, spoke on. Um, there are some people that may have just a van or a truck, uh, Xfinity or Pepsi or Co- Coca-Cola. They, there are work, uh, vehicles that, um, according to their job, they, you know, they have to bring them home. So I was thinking too, if Mayor, uh, Cross said that maybe, um, if that was the case, then they would just forfeit their, um, driveway and, and park their personal car on the street. The other thing is I agree with, um, Councilman Herring where there are a lot of areas where, um, business owners actually have their fleet. I call it a fleet, you know, you have four, three, five, um, trucks. Um, I, I think there was a situation down on Dalewood, um, in the little Cota Set, um, where the owner, um, had the trucks there parked. And then the, the people that drove the trucks would come and get the trucks and then park their, their personal cars there all day. So, um, that, I think that maybe possibly could be a compromise where it's only one or two per household, um, and that's the restriction and, and that's that. Anything, um, over whatever the number that could possibly be, um, allocated would be, um, invalidation. Um, and as, um, Councilwoman Gill said, a lot of, um, there's a lot of, um, multifamily homes now. So, you know, you have a lot of, a lot of people, um, look back renting rooms and, and things like that. So that's an option that they, they have to decide whether or not, you know, if it's just one commercial vehicle per household, then they don't have to deal with that. But I think that, in my opinion, um, you know, the choice to park it in their driveway and have at least one, because some people, part of their requirement, so their job is to be able to bring that vehicle home. Um, and I'm talking about just like vans or just small, I mean, meat, repurposed, um, vehicles. But as far as having four and five, uh, trucks and, and vehicles, um, that definitely should be prohibited.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Herring, I know before the break, uh, when we decided to table this, we, um, the topic was raised about permitting. Do you see that as a, a possible, um, uh, compromise or?
The legislation that passed for the permits, I mean, it's gonna do the exact same thing, you're gonna have the same type of back and forth. Because the legislation that was passed allows for two permits per household, that's it. And you have to be an owner of the house or ha- or be on a lease of wherever you're renting from. I, um, um, and so you're still only gonna get two permits for the street. You know, so I'm not sure if these people who's renting these rooms or whatever, what they're gonna do with their cars, because their cars want to get towed.
Yep.
So you're still gonna have outcry. So now people's personal vehicles are gonna get towed. So you put, I think you put corporations before, before the people. Um, but I mean, I mean, either way, like I said, the mayor made a suggestion, we can in- enact that and see how that works. And, you know, when the back and forth comes back, it's gonna come back because again, nobody can just get a permit. It is only gonna allow two permits per household and one caregiver permit. If you have, if you have a senior that has a caregiver that comes, they get, they'll get a permit. And so that's it, so you get, you can park in the driveway and you get two for, for on a street. But it's really, it was really meant for residential use, not, not for commercial vehicles. Again, and what's to keep somebody from, who may get two permits and they only need one and giving it to somebody else to park on the street? You know, I mean, if, I mean, I mean, the only way it's gonna work is if code enforcement do their due diligence and run these, uh, the, uh, permits, just in the windows and make sure that they're, they're supposed to be in the city. If they're not gonna do that, then it's not gonna work. And that's, the enforcement is gonna be the key to the permit process. Um, so, but I still just think that this commercial vehicle, I mean, we've never had them before, this is a major issue. I understand people have to work, some people gotta bring them home. I think they bring them home with more of a courtesy than it is a requirement. I honestly believe that, I think it's more of a courtesy than it is a requirement. Most, most people I know who have work vehicles, they don't, their job allows them to bring home because it's a courtesy. Just like we allow the police officers to take their cars home as a courtesy. It isn't a requirement, it's a courtesy.
Okay. Thank you. All right, we have a couple of weeks, uh, to, um, if you guys have, uh, anything, uh, to work out. You have a couple of weeks before goes to full revote, and next week there'll be a public hearing on it again. Um, yeah, and then we'll move forward. Next topic is ordinance, uh, oh, dash, your five, dash, twenty twenty-three, an ordinance to amend chapter sixteen, ethics. Um, and councilmembers, this came straight from the attorney, uh, as, uh, state laws have changed. Uh, and he presented this ordinance in an effort to make sure that our, our laws, uh, were, uh, uh, in alignment with, uh, the state, um, state laws. So, were there any questions as it relates to this ordinance?
Yeah, Mr. President.
Councilman Herring?
Yes, I just wanted to be clear, you know, for the citizens that we are required by law to have this in our code.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Uh, Mayor Cross?
Thank you, Council President. Um, I just got one concern with this. This is pushed as a ordinance. Ordinances are by the charter of the city of Glen Arden, uh, in the will of the mayor, uh, not the city manager. I do take issue with the city manager signing on this because the ethics does not have a, it is appointed by the mayor and confirmed by the council. The city manager has no role in the, uh, board of ethics, uh, even appointment or in its jurisdiction. So, uh, the, the way that this legislation is written does need to be modified, uh, for the mayor. Uh, it even states that the mayor can, uh, veto the ordinance, but you have the city manager signing, which is something that, uh, I do take issue with. And it is an objection and a violation to the charter.
Well, well, I don't think anyone's violating the charter. Ordinances are signed by, uh, the mayor. Um, and, uh, the, uh, uh, city manager is not signing in, in lieu of the mayor. Uh, never has and doesn't have the authority to sign in lieu of the mayor. Uh, Council Clerk, do you want to, um, elaborate on just the, the structure of the document?
Sure, I just wanted to point out that the city manager in, in the instances of ordinances is simply attesting to, um, what has been written and that in that signature block, it actually should have, um, the mayor as, uh, as approving, as approving the ordinance, not, not the city manager.
Yeah, so this, it, Acting City Manager, uh, will not be signed in your place. Um, and has not on any of the ordinance that we have enacted.
I, I think that what Ms. Robin said is correct, though this needs to be modified. In its current status, it is, uh, in violation of the charter.
Thank you, Mayor Cross. Uh, Councilwoman Ferguson?
I was just gonna say, um, that, um, the mayor, uh, signature block could be added, um, for the proving. But again, I don't see a problem with the testing. I don't think where there's a violation.
Yeah, that's fine.
But she should be at, at it, uh, or signature.
Yeah. Okay, any other questions from Council?
Yes. The, I, I, I noticed that on another piece of legislation, we had the city manager attest, and I think that's a, that's not a good precedent to start. I really don't, I don't think that's a good precedent to start. We never had the city manager sign off on any piece of legislation or test to anything. Um, there's no reason for the city manager to attest to the legislation. Um, you know, again, if, uh, the council clerk signs off on it and, um, uh, the council signs off on it and the mayor signs off on it. And as part of the legislative body, that's, I feel that's who should be signing off on the legislation based on our charter. I don't see, I've never, I've never seen that before and I don't think it's needed. I don't think it should be, it should be a precedent that started. Because if the city, so what, if the city manager doesn't sign it, is it not in effect? You know, I don't think that's, that's not something that's required in our charter.
Okay, any other comments? Thank you, Councilman Herring. Any other comments from the council? All right. Moving on, um, we had these two presentations today, one from, uh, for the Opera Management and one for the, uh, Grant Services. Those resolutions are, were, or are being presented today. Um, yeah, is there any questions relating to those? From councilmembers? Okay, well then, then we'll go to public hearing next week and be up for vote on the regular session. Mayor Cross?
Thank you. Um, Mr. Hamlin, I didn't see where the near, uh, well, the four thousand five hundred dollars per month. Uh, I saw in the one, uh, that was presented for the police, three thousand seven hundred and fifty, uh, by my account, that equates to the city of Glen Arden, uh, paying for these, uh, program managers and opera money, uh, folks nearly, um, nine thousand dollars a month? Is that what I'm reading with these two legislations?
Um, I wouldn't interpret it that way, uh, at all, but Chief Bryant, uh, did you go to something?
No, the treasurer and I went over the numbers and stuff. Um, initially, we had funding for a project manager, that was sixty-five thousand a year. Um, that's sixty-five thousand a year. And like Hamler said, his contract is over two years. So if you calculate that, his over two years, that's sixty-five thousand twice, that's a hundred and what? Hundred thirty dollars, hundred thirty thousand dollars. And, um, the treasurer calculated and it actually is, uh, equal to that pay for two years for a project manager coming in. So, but if he's on the phone, he can, uh, if he's on the call, he can kinda, um, explain it better than I, I could by being the treasurer.
Thank you, Chief Bryant. Uh, Councilwoman Jones?
The opera, uh, money does afford the, the, the receiver, the recipients of a project manager. And there's monies in there assigned about how much they can have. I don't have those figures with me, but that, that's something that you might want to look up, Mayor Cross. Uh, the opera fund does afford a project manager for the opera funds.
Thank you. Were there any other questions from the council?
Uh, yes, uh.
Councilman Herring?
Yeah, okay, because I'm, I'm looking at these numbers also, and they, I mean, three hundred dollars an hour is, is, it is a lot, but, um, I mean, if it's utilized correctly, but you can go with a hundred and eight, well, you can hit a hundred and eight thousand dollars real quick, real fast. At three hundred dollars a mo- three hundred dollars an hour, because you're talking about on average, if they just do an eight hour day, you're talking about, um, what, forty-two hundred dollars? Just on an eight hour day, if they do an eight hour day. Um, and say a month, it'd be about forty-eight thousand dollars. So, um, I mean, even, well, even a hundred and eight thousand dollars be enough. Looking at, I mean, because we, I mean, we have some major programs in effect that we're looking at them managing. So, I mean, has that been looked at and considered based on this? Based on the number that they have in here of a hundred and eight thousand dollars? Uh, because as, they also gonna have to, if they're gonna manage the project also, that's gonna be additional hours. Isn't just implementing, it's also a manager, I'm assuming.
Yeah, thank you for that, uh, Councilman Herring, uh, and Chief Bryant, you can, um, verify this. So the hundred eight thousand dollars, from my understanding, one, will be paid out of opera funds. Uh, that's about two percent of the overall pot to help administer the overall opera funds. Uh, and also, um, the hundred eight thousand dollars, uh, um, yeah, I couldn't agree with you, doesn't seem like it's a lot. Uh, but from what I heard from the presentation, if they ever reach that max, then they're taking the hit. Because, uh, and then they'll be working pro bono over that, uh, hundred eight thousand dollars. So it is the two-sided thing. You don't have to reach a hundred eight thousand dollars. You know, they'll be working almost like what I envision, at least, uh, a lawyer. If they're working on something, they'll charge for it, uh, and then they'll bill us for it. If not, then they don't, they don't collect any funds. If they are working, uh, and go over that amount, then they take the hit all the way for that. Uh, Chief Bryant, am I correct in that summation?
Yeah, that's what he stated, um, he stated, and, and that's pretty much correct, what he said.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. President, just. That's not what he said, he said when we hit the hundred eight thousand dollars, we stop. That's what he said, we stop. He doesn't keep on going, they, once they hit that maximum, they stop. They don't, they don't keep on going, that's what he said.
Okay, so, thank you for that, Councilman Herring. I, I, you know, I differed in what I heard from him, so we could just go back to him and ask for clarification, have it in writing. I, and actually make sure that's in, uh, the contract, that if they ever hit that ceiling, then they're still on the hook for the three years, uh, to provide services. Was it two years? I thought it was three years. Two, I'm sorry, two years to provide those services. So, um, if people heard differently, we'll go back and get, uh, it in writing uh, and make sure that is a part of the contract before we, uh, sign off on anything.
Sounds good to me.
All right, uh, Council, uh, Councilwoman Ferguson, did you have something to say?
Um, oh, I just thought I heard him say, um, when they got there, they don't stop.
Right, definitely, definitely. Um, when I spoke to him before this meeting, that's what he told me, but I'll get it in writing.
Yeah, thank you, because I can see the concern from Mr. Herring, if they do, if they said they do stop, but if they don't stop, then.
Most definitely.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, with that, we are moving on to the next topic. Councilwoman Ferguson, you have a.
Okay, are you, were you going to the reports?
Yeah, reports are next.
Um, what, what about these, um, um, resolutions for the cars?
Yeah, yeah, well, I haven't gotten to them yet.
Oh, I thought you was going to the reports, reports?
No, I wasn't, I was going to.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sorry.
All right. Next up, uh, is the resolution to authorize. Next up, uh is the resolution to authorize a Ford police interceptor from New Holland Route. Any questions on that resolution? Concerns, comments? Oh, okay.
Well, excuse me, I'm Mr. President, you saying this is for the cars?
Councilman, yes, uh, the first one.
We voted on these already.
We voted on these already.
I thought, didn't you vote on something about cars before?
I think we got one cruiser, right, please?
Yeah, we, but what happened was, when I took over as active city manager, um I found out that we didn't have resolutions um for some of the vehicles, um code enforcement and two of the new police vehicles. Um, once I took over and spoke with Dean about it, I found out that we need a resolution for them. So we already have the vehicles, we just got the resolutions in. Um, so uh that's why you're seeing a couple of them on here like that. But we already have the um, we already had the vehicles, but they didn't get the resolutions in um under prior city manager, so that's what I'm working on, getting them all taken care of.
Oh, so these are old?
Uh, yeah.
Um how do we buy these cars if we didn't have a resolution? I mean, this is like forty thousand dollars. I mean, they bought, they spent forty thousand dollars with no resolution?
Well, we, well, I said the same thing uh when I was acting, I was chief of police, only thing I was required to do, once we had the money in the budget, prepare a purchase order. So I I did my part, prepared the purchase order cuz the money was there for it. Um, once I took over acting city manager, I spoke with uh the treasurer and the administration staff, learning that processes acting city manager, I found out that we had some things that we didn't have resolutions for, so being acting city manager, I want to make sure everything is all um T's across and all I's are dotted, make sure I got them in.
So you were told that once it's approved in the budget, you can buy it without a resolution?
What I'm saying is, we didn't have resolutions for them. I I know they were approved, when our budget was approved, they were in the budget. So the, we already have these vehicles, um, the code enforcement vehicle, yeah, we already have them. But I I I found out they didn't, they didn't have resolutions for them at the particular time. So I'm just making sure we have resolutions for them.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well yeah, we can look at the process cuz I I could have sworn that Dean doesn't approve anything without a resolution. Uh, when it's um that the um uh amount of dollars, uh but we can make sure and with Councilman Harry, I I thought for most, we did have a resolution, but we could go back and in in search, uh but I'll still appreciate you if there is a resolution presenting it uh so that we could um have a a lot of ducks in order. Uh, but we can look at that process and procedure, make sure we tighten that up. Um, if it wasn't done the right way and just move I'm sorry, Councilman here?
I said, I thought we did vote on this.
Yeah, I thought so too.
Something, maybe some other cars.
Council clerk, could you look? I I I could, so we have one at least for the um, the code enforcement car.
Um, President Curtis, there were some council people in here um searching. This is prior, again, prior to me not passing it. But um they were able to find previous uh resolutions, but they weren't, in fact, these vehicles.
Okay.
All right, that's where we stand, and I do know that they did in fact speak with um with Dean, who who probably can confirm this, that uh uh there were not resolutions done in accordance as it should have been done.
Okay, well, you
Well, I mean, I I'm tell you honestly, I do have a problem with the whole process breaking down like this cuz this is over a hundred thousand dollars that was purchased without resolution and it went through both, you know, um the department head and the finance department and no one waved a red flag saying, hey, wait up, we gotta do a resolution before we purchase these. You know, that's a, that's a problem for me.
There's a problem for me too, that's why I'm addressing it now.
I understand.
Yeah, it's most definitely, that's why we're addressing it.
Yeah, uh, you know, we can look, make sure we tighten it up and make sure you know, correct it and make sure that it happen again and and move forward from there.
I agree.
Appreciate that, uh, acting city manager Bryant.
No problem.
I take it it's the same one for
Yes.
The two, okay. All right. Yeah, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Jones?
Thank you. Um, um, and to get clarity on this, I think that this was because of not the uh code enforcement vehicles. We have resolutions for those. In fact, I'll I'll pull those up, but um I think it was the chief's vehicle that was ordered and that there was no resolution. And then the two vehicles that they've already ordered for um the police department that were in budget for this year.
Right.
The resolution had not been presented, so this is what these resolutions are for.
Okay.
So, uh also, Chief Bryant.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, I would like to have an updated list of your car inventory. I was given that uh list, and it and it includes the vehicle, the year of the vehicle, the mileage. The person, the the number that's assigned to it and the person that's driving it. I need an updated list of that. I'd like to see what the inventory is.
Okay, I'll get that to you.
I'm sorry, I would kinda like to kinda maybe wait until these other two new new vehicles come on board, so that I'll have a come uh 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 future, not future, but a list that is for now. You know, in in the, so now I don't wanna have to add those two vehicles. I want all of the vehicles. Once you get the other two onboard, and I know that might take a little bit of time because of the delay and and obtaining vehicles now.
Well, actually, um Captain Jackson went down to data check on the vehicles. I think we probably had the vehicles um delivered to us, um fully equipped by um by the end of month or beginning of, no, February, so it, they're moving pretty fast. Um, so we can get that list out to everybody with all the information, uh like we did the last time.
Okay, yeah, I I think um, if I'm not, I might be mistaken. I think Lieutenant Robinson put that together for for Chief O'Donnell, and he sent it out to all of us.
Yeah, we get the same thing, taken care, no problem.
All right, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Uh, Councilman Ferguson?
Okay, these are um for a total of three cars, um
Yes, ma'am.
So, the cars, so were there um resolution for outfitting them as well? I mean, I know you, I know you inherited this, um, uh, cuz I mean, I was, um Councilman Herring, that that those, this resolution should have came before, but the vehicles were uh purchased, so, but that's neither handle there. I mean, the fact that you have caught this and came behind it and tried to rectify it, but I I am um wondering, um was there a resolution? I think we did a resolution on um outfitting. Um, Councilman Herring, when we do the um outfitting, usually we do it per uh, if we're getting four cars, then we do a resolution for four cars, not just um I mean, for the amount of cars that that are gonna be purchased, is that correct?
Yeah, I think we do it for the amount of the cars. I don't know if that outfitting is included cuz it goes to a different place, I think, by outfitting. Is that correct, chief?
Yes, um, that comes from budget line, from me talking, uh speaking with Dean in reference uh to that. Um, I don't know the exact budget line it comes from, but um I know it comes from a different place for outfitting the vehicles.
Yeah, I know, then we do a separate resolution for the outfit.
Yeah, cuz it's used over six thousand, right? So we, the resolution need to be down for that as well. Um, I guess it could be done for um, but they can do it for uh one resolution for the three, right? Three outfitting?
Yeah, I I'll uh, I'll follow with Dean tomorrow in reference to that.
Thank you.
All right.
Uh, Councilman, I don't know if that's a new hand?
No, this is new hand. I noticed on this resolution, there's none of the information is on the back of it. I don't know if the council clerk has this information in in the office and didn't uh attach it, or uh can we get the uh invoice, the PDF, I mean, uh the um
Purchase order.
Purchase order, I'm sorry, thank you. The purchase order and all of that information also. And then when you do the outfitting, I think it's gonna be outfitted to officer, uh vehicles are gonna be outfitted differently than what how the chief's vehicles outfitted, so make sure that they have specific um for each vehicle, the specifics for each vehicle as far as outfitting. That information needs to be attached to these resolutions.
Council president, if I may?
Yes, council clerk?
So, yes, I need to get that info. I realized that once we posted it, that that information didn't come forth with the resolution, so I will get with the chief and make sure that all of it is included um for the next round.
Okay. Thank you. Uh Mayor Cross, briefly, cuz we're trying to move forward.
Thank you, Council President. I just have one concern cuz resolutions need to come before the people uh presented work session and then a public uh session so that the people can have comment on it. These vehicles have already been purchased. How do we rectify the voter's voice at this point? It's been negated.
Uh, well, I I differ that the voter's voice has been negated. Um, I think this goes down to process because uh one, the voters had a first voice uh when we established the budget and it went before the voters. Um, and they have ample opportunity to uh say something, whether for or against uh what the police department was doing, so um the voters, voter's voice was not negated. Uh, now, if we wanna talk about the process uh and how it got to the actual paying of the dollars, um then I agree with Mr. Harry, we need to make sure we tighten that up. Um, you know, everybody differs on opinion, that, I mean, I'm of the fact that it's, you know, um if we approve it in a budget, then we don't need a resolution, but that's a personal opinion. Um, the the charter states that it needs to um come and have a resolution, and I respect that. Uh, but I I do push back that the voters did not have a voice because they did have a voice in this, and we just need to make sure we tighten up the process uh to make sure we're following the proper policies and procedures. Uh, which, you know, this inherent in in running a business, it's, uh, as you see a mistake, you own it. Uh, learn from it and move forward. With that, we're moving on to uh the administrative reports. Um, and uh as we have been practicing, uh council has an opportunity to speak on the reports uh in this week, uh also have opportunity next week as well, uh but solely for the council this week. Um uh, you know, any questions, comments, concerns on any of the uh administrative reports, mayor report, city manager report, chief police report, director of public works report, or the treasurer's financial reports? Um, I did want to say, and I don't see uh Mr. Simpson on this call. Uh, so I'll probably do it again in a very session. Uh, Chief Bryant, uh, you know, appreciate him hearing um of the concerns that kinda rolled over from uh our former city manager. I made a request that I think it's Fisk and another intersection that I can't recall. Uh, it might be Glen Arden Parkway. Uh, about the crosswalk, um, uh and I saw that that was done, so I appreciate that being done. And I understand that it's a temporary fix into the weather changes because you can't do the permanent uh uh fix into the weather changes, but appreciate the the effort that Mr. Simpson and his team made to make sure that the children who go to uh either um uh Glen Arden Woods and Savanne Woods uh can walk across the street safely at the intersection, so thank you.
Thank you.
If there are no other comments or questions throughout our report, we'll move on to the topics of discussion. Uh, in absence of Councilwoman Fareed, uh who I will say that she did alert me before this meeting that she will not be in attendance. Uh, we're going to table the financial literacy, uh and move right into the in-person meetings, uh Councilman Harry?
Yeah, um, I do have a a a situation, issue, I think, I feel with these in-person meetings. I feel like if we're gonna advertise these meetings as in-person meetings, then people need to be in person. The council needs to be in person. If we're saying we're gonna have in-person meetings and the citizens are gonna come out their homes and trudge up there to the goal room, become, trudge up there to the uh office to um me, to the council chambers to attend the meetings, I think that we should be that every council member should be there in person, and if you're not there in person, you should be counted as absent. I don't think it's right for the citizens to not have that ability to see a person when they're saying they're gonna see a person in person. And not have them on Zoom, I say in the Zoom, the Zoom, you really can't fully participate in the meeting. Uh, you barely can hear the person, you barely can hear the person's vote, you barely can hear any conversation. Unless you're holding the microphone down to this and microphone down to that and all this other stuff, but I think if it's advertised as an in-person meeting, then they need to, then the council members have have a duty, every, and a responsibility to the citizens to be in person, cuz that's what we told them we were gonna do. And I think that if you're not in person, um then you should be counted as absent, and you should not be able to participate via Zoom. You know? If everybody else can make it out, then then they can. That's not, I mean, isn't fair to everybody else, cuz eventually, it's gonna be six council members on Zoom, one council member in 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 the audience and the citizens. And it ended up being a virtual, but you are still considered an in-person. So that that's my, I mean, I just feel that that's something we need to look at, because I don't think it's right, you know?
Uh, I, thank you, Councilman Herring. Uh, I I'll go to the two that I'll make my comment. I saw uh Councilman Jones, then Ferguson, then I'll have my comment. Councilwoman Jones?
Uh, yes, sir, thank you. Uh, not that I have to discuss any of my medical issues with anybody, but the one meeting that I did not attend, my mother was diagnosed with COVID, and I also was diagnosed with COVID, and I was not gonna come to a meeting. And I I mean, I didn't have any of the symptoms, but this is what the test said that I had COVID. So, I was not gonna come to a meeting and with the uh uh even trying to spread anything to anybody. I will not do that. I was just diagnosed the other day with laryngitis. Thank God it's laryngitis and not uh strep throat or the flu or COVID. But I am the kind of person that if I have something that's contagious and that the health department has deemed that it's contagious, I am not gonna come around to other people. I will not do that. So that is one of the reasons why I didn't come to the meeting, and I think any councilperson, if you don't, if you're not feeling well to the point where you can't participate, that's one thing. But I did not have any symptoms other than the 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 test said that's what I had. But I was still not going to and 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 inflict afflict someone else with something not knowing, not knowing that I had it and and give it to them, and I think that should be taken in consideration also.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jones, Councilman Ferguson?
Yeah, I was gonna um, kinda speak on that as well. Um, I mean, if someone just uh on uh Zoom, just because they don't feel that coming out, that's one thing, and then then they should just go ahead on and be absent. But there are cases like, um, you know, as I say, somebody got a pink eye or something, that's considered contagious, but they're 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 um are well enough to participate. The other thing is, some people at certain times of the year, their job requires them to to travel. And while they uh may not be working at night during the time of the the meeting, the next day, they have to, they, I mean, they still have to be in, you know, out of town for that week. And so, um, I think that under those, you know, certain circumstance, this should be allowed because um one, because they're doing their job, you know, during the day, but they're in Boston somewhere, but but they're, we at night, they should be able to zoom in. So, um, there should be some, I mean, some kind of um leniency to certain things. That's my opinion.
Thank you. Um, thank Councilman Ferguson. I I will say two things uh without elaborating more on Councilman Jones' situation. She did contact me ahead of time to let me know. Um, uh, and so, um you know, I knew in advance that she was going to be remote and tried to make a comp basis for her. I I do understand the difficulties that Mr. Herring uh is is talking about. I just think that, you know, we just need to, you know, um discuss it, and if it, if we want it to be a rule in our council rules, then we can make it a rule in our council rules. Or whether it's uh an excused absence or unexcused absence, and the repercussions for excused versus un- uh unexcused. Um, you know, I think you can take that up in our council rules and uh whatever we decide collectively, we'll go with it. We, you know, say that, look, if you have a medical condition and we see it as an excused absence and you're just not on at all, then fine, or if, you know, it's an excuse absence, and then you can be remote, then then fine, but you know, the the council uh by majority vote can can vote on that via via rules. Um, and that way, we we can have something clear and we can move forward with what we all agree on. Uh, Councilman Harry, last word to you?
Yeah, let me say, this was not directed at any individual, anyone person. I've just seen it happen a number of times with a number of council members, and I'm just looking at it. Yeah, let me say, this was not directed at any individual, anyone person. I've just seen it happen a number of times with a number of council members and I'm just looking at it. From the perspective of a citizen, if I come out to a meeting, if I can come out and trudge up here. And I know one citizen that come out on a walker, trudge up to that meeting, then every council member should be able to do the same and whether you're sick or not. Before we had Zoom, if you were sick or not, you would just exactly, you're just absent, which you should be. If you're sick, stay home, you know? And I don't think I should have to get, bring a doctor's note to say whether it's excused or not. That's nobody's business why I'm out and, you know, Ms. Jones, I. Personally, I don't think you should disclose anything. I mean, I didn't, but it's speaking up, speaking on you specifically because it's nobody's business why you out. Um, but I'm just saying that I just think that, um, again. I think that everybody should be in attendance in an in-person meeting and if you're not in attendance, then you should be marked absent. And also, again, I don't think nobody should have to be bringing a doctor's note. Who's going to prove these notes? Who's going to say it's a valid reason and it's not a valid reason? You know, I mean, like I said, I mean, I I graduated, I mean, I ain't brand a note since I was in sixth grade. Same while I was out sick. I don't do that on my job. You know, so, I mean, now you're going down another slippery slope. Because again, people have a right to their privacy, people have a right to their medical privacy. And I don't actually have to share my medical history with anybody because I didn't come to a meeting. If you don't come to a meeting, you just don't come to a meeting. And you let it fall away, man. I mean, it ain't like you want to get dinged because you ain't come to a meeting, you're just not there. You know, and 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 you travel and you travel, you got to travel for your job, you travel for your job, you got to, you sick, you sick. You just don't feel like coming, you just don't come, you just be marked as absent. I mean, I'm not seeing what the issue is. Again, I'm not, I know one thing right now, and I can tell you, I'm not giving you a note for nothing. Well, if I'm out or not, what I'm give a rule y'all put in place. If I'm out and sick, I'm not giving you a note saying I'm I'm going to be out sick. Because I can just tell you I'm going to be out sick and 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 I ain't going to explain why I'm out sick or if I'm out sick or why I'm out sick. It's nobody's business why I'm out.
Thank you, uh, thank you, Councilman Harry, uh, and and just for, I didn't think your 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 suggestion was pointing at anyone. So I thought it was done in good faith, so, um, and my idea of note was just, uh, just a thought. I I wouldn't want to have to, you know, do a doctor's note or anything, but, uh, what I do recommend us do. If we want to change the council rules, then we change it, then we add it, not change, but we add it to the council rules. So, uh, Mr. Harry, if, uh, if this is something you want to see, I, you know. If you want to, you know, present a resolution and add it to the council rules, you know, you're more than welcome, um, uh, to do it because I think, I mean. I I think that's the only one, only way, uh, the president, whoever it is, can, you know, uh, kind of manage that piece, so. Yeah, if you want to take a first stab at it. All means.
I do it because I don't even think the council rules doesn't even allow for, I don't even think the council rules even allow for. A hybrid, see the Zoom in person, I think it is.
Okay. Uh, and and to be honest, I thought it was something also that the, uh, the charter review committee could take up as they're. Overhauling the overall charter, so, um, yeah, I I welcome the resolution, so thank you, Mr. Harry. Councilman Harry.
Thanks.
Uh, all right, next is goal room. Uh, am I, uh, President Curtis? Um, so. This goes into, um. Uh, Ms. Schultz here? Ms. Schultz is not here.
Speak on that.
Yes, you know, chief.
And once again, good evening, everyone. Um, a reference to the goal room, uh, we, uh, had a few submissions for crew, uh. Crew members, uh, we didn't get any submissions for crew chief. Um, they were able to interview two people. Um, one person was interviewed. Um, today at nine and the other person interviewed at ten. So we had, uh, we had three positions available. Three positions available, um, and four people applied, um. One person stepped out of the interview today, um, after he found out that Potter's assignment would be cleaning the restrooms. Um, so we have, um, right now, we just have, um, two more interviews. Uh, the second interview went pretty well. And, um, like I said, it's, uh, three applications so far and three positions, so definitely staying as far as, uh, crew members. Uh, as far as crew chief, we didn't get any submissions for that.
Thank you, Chief Brian. Uh, and Ms. Schultz, did you want to talk on the law of the?
Good evening. Uh, January first, the minimum wage in state of Maryland changed to thirteen dollars and twenty-five cents an hour. Our crew members budgeted, if I'm not mistaken, is twelve dollars and eighty-five cents with short. Um, so that if and when we do hire crew members, we're going to have to get on with the minimum wages.
Are there any comments, concerns, and council members' questions?
Yes, uh, Mr. President. So, uh, Ms. Schultz, so right now you said that the rate is what?
It just went up to thirteen twenty-five as of January one.
And we're currently paying?
I think we're paying twelve eighty-five. Um, I don't have the budget to fund me, but I think Dean can can concur with, we're paying lower than the thirteen twenty-five. And whatever, we we need to bring it up. If we hire.
So the budget needs, the budget needs to be amended. To increase the salary.
He, it sounds like it's.
Yeah.
Yes.
At this, I think if we're going to do that, we need to do that, you know. About to have a piece of legislation by the next public hearing. To increase that, to amend the budget to increase that rate because we have to do it by law, we have to take it up no matter what.
Right, right.
Unless we cut the hour, unless we cut the hours of the position right now in order to cover the salary.
Well, we don't, we don't ha- a- a- as Chief said, we don't have anyone who applied for the crew. Crew chief. Now, that sound was thirteen something, but it wasn't a a a a lot of money. It wasn't much above what current minimum wa- the new current minimum wage is. Um, we had four, we had four, uh, crew member positions. Of which one of them was frozen back in twenty-one, I think, which left three. Now, I don't know how many, uh, are going to get selected, uh, from those who have applied, uh. To see how how we can cut or not cut, but whatever we need to do, I'll work with the chief to ensure it gets done.
So we, so, so, I mean, but that brings another issue. So they're moving up to thirteen and the crew chief is already at thirteen, we need to take them up also.
We need to take, we need to take, well, we need to take all of them up if you want to know the truth. Uh, that's why we are, in my opinion, we're not really getting good candidates for any of them, as I told, um. Uh, the president back this summer, when he asked me about the salaries, McDonald's back in the summer was paying fifteen dollars an hour, we were only paying twelve.
So it's Walmart walking in the door.
I'll be a reader, but anyway, uh, yeah, so I I do think maybe all of them and I can work with Dean and, um, the chief to see, um. What we can afford on this year's budget, um, with, even with an amendment. If 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 I have your.
I mean, I'm just saying that, I mean, money's going to have to be added to that budget in order to cover the salaries no matter what. Because if we're going, if we're, we're not getting anybody for the crew chief is obviously because the salary is competitive. So we need to take up the salaries to be competitive with McDonald's or Walmart, which is fifteen dollars for for the staff and something else for the crew chief. I mean, just looking at it, I mean, reasonably, if you want to get anybody up in there, so.
Okay.
I think you should work on something like that and bring it to us so that we can at least be able to consider and maybe bring it to a public hearing and if we can discuss, discuss at the public hearing, um. And 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 do something, I mean, because we got to get people in there.
Yes, sir. Okay, I I will work with, I will work with the chief and, uh, and and treasurer, um, on on this.
All right, thank you.
Ms. Schultz, thank you. Uh, we'll await that. Uh, I know six months have passed. So we may not need an amendment, but we may need an amendment, but, you know, we'll just wait for whatever proposal. Uh, you guys come up with, uh, and then go from there. Councilwoman Jones?
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Schultz, Mrs. Schultz, are we going to do a comparable rate? Well, how much that people are 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 being paid for those positions?
When I use that set, when I use that position within our salary survey. Where we're one of only maybe, there's maybe two. Um, municipalities, um, both in county and out county that have the type of position, goal room coordinator. Um, when I got the information together for President Curtis back this summer after the, um, MML meeting. I basically went online to see what McDonald's was paying, they're walking in the door and those other places, and I can do that again.
Okay, but I'm I'm speaking of, uh, venues, event venues, uh, that that utilize those types of personnel.
Uh, I ca- I haven't, I can't. I I I I haven't because, no. I guess I didn't think, well, while there are event venues, they use that type of personnel. The 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 amount of time used, um, the number of events compared to what we have right now, I. Didn't know how compatible they were, but I will look into, um, uh. The place in Greenbelt and the place on four fifty, I think those are the only two places. In Prince George's County that's compatible to, um. To the goal room, but I'll I'll double check to see what what is out there compatible to the goal room.
I think the place on four fifty is closed, if I'm not mistaken, but, um, there's a place out on two fourteen, uh, Evangel Cathedral has a, uh. A a a venue where they do events and stuff like that, so you might want to.
Oh, yeah, exactly. You're actually correct, and I know they pay a lot more, but my, I've been there for some events, correct? But you're right, I I forgot about that one. Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Jones. Uh, last word, Councilman Ferguson, did you have anything?
Oh, I was just about to say, I think there's one in Kentland.
Okay.
Next up is call bus. President Curtis, um. So the issue that was, I shoot it over to.
Yes, um, of course, um, our call bus went out of service. Um, so we're down right now, we don't have a call bus, um. We're working with our Babe Moore and, um, Councilmember Jones offers some assistance from her experience and knowledge from the past, um, call a bus. A service, so we're working on that to try to, um. Get another call a bus, um, looking at prices and so forth. Um, they also came up when we was talking to the Opera, um, project consultant. Um, they was talking about funding being in there for, actually for that too, so we're looking at different options and stuff, um. I spoke with Babe Moore earlier, I don't know if he's on the call, but I spoke to him in case he wasn't on the call. And, uh, apparently, um, we supposed to be doing a follow-up meeting tomorrow in reference to that to get an update on, um. The big thing now, the price of the bus and the size, we're trying to get for the city of Glen Arden. Um, with a wheelchair lift added to it, to assist us, uh, the members of the community, uh, we're looking at, um. Possibly a ten passenger or fifteen passenger, uh, with a lift. And then, uh, once we get that information, we try to move forward, but the big thing was, uh, I don't think they had availability. Um, Councilmember Jones, if you got some additional information you can add, I appreciate it.
Yes, uh, other than, uh, what you've just indicated, the, uh, I did get an email from the, uh, the director of, uh, the person that's doing that. And he says that they didn't have, they, it would be sometime in the early part of this year before they found out, before they got any more, uh. Found out, find out whether they're going to receive any more, uh, buses. Uh, they're going to get some new buses, but they don't, they just don't know when. He's thinking it'll be the early part of this year. Uh, that they'll, uh, be able to do that, but right now he, they didn't have anything because we were looking, when we went out, I went with Mr. Batesmore out to, uh. The Prince George's County, uh, call a bus service and we did see, um, a temporary, uh, vehicle. But that vehicle had not been turned in yet, so we couldn't, uh, we couldn't obtain that vehicle just to, uh, keep us, uh, going. But they're supposed to acquire some new buses, uh, sometime this, in this early part of the first quarter of this year, so, um. We're at the juncture, we'll just have to wait and see. I did think earlier today, maybe we could, uh, shoot an email. To, um, Jolene Ivey's office to see if, uh, she can help assist us in, uh. Getting, um, you know, I know that the guy, Mr. Harrison, his name is Harrison also, is is aware that we're in looking for a bus and need a bus. You know, but just to see if they can, uh, kind of assist us in, uh, you know, moving the process along.
Yeah, thank you for that assistance too. Uh, we'll follow up on that tomorrow and get back to the council and mayor in reference to that, what update we have.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, Councilwoman Johnson, I see manager Brian. With that, that was the last topic of the discussion. The next up is, uh, so pursuant to the annotated code of Maryland State Government Article Section ten dash five oh eight A. The council may, by a majority vote, um, may retire to executive a closed session at any time during a meeting. Should the council retire to executive closed session, the chair will announce the reason. And a report will be issued that future movements closing the reasons for such closed session. Uh, and I want to make a a motion to adjourn into, uh, closed session. Uh, to discuss, um, the applicants for city manager, um. Yeah. And some. And strategic planning meeting, uh, for the council. Uh, with that, uh, I have one to make that first motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President, um, has the, has the job announcement closed? I thought it didn't close till the end of this month.
Um, I am not sure, actually, uh, Ms. Schultz, did it, oh, Chief Brian, did it close yet?
No.
To the thirty.
Sorry, the job closes on the end of the month, but because it's a two months. Um, because it's a two months, um. Uh, opening. Um, I was, I, there's nothing wrong with looking at what you have thus far, not making a selection. Looking at what you have thus far and then looking at what you get in the second month. Because by acting out what I normally do, if a job is open that long, I will call the applicants that we have that have been deemed qualified. To see if they're still interested because it has been a while since they applied.
Okay, I I feel that we should wait till it closes and get whatever we need to get and, I mean, I just seem, I mean, because we may get better applicants than what we have right now. And I think it'd be fair to everybody, we should wait till it closes and then move forward after they've been reviewed through the, gone through the process. Because right now, I mean, who's to say these applicants aren't even qualified? We might do next month, we could get some people that's more qualified and we'll be back here looking again. At some more applicants. You know, I just think we need to, we need to wait till it closes and then, uh, I mean, to be fair to all applicants. Um, and not get one up over the other.
Well, I was not, uh, uh, my suggestion would have been not to make any type of selection at all until you saw those who qual- who applied. Throughout the entire vacancy, period. But, um, that's just a a way that I go when I have it extended longer than thirty days, but I'm 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 here to work with you.
Yeah, Mr. Harry, I I think we could talk about that in a closed session if that's what the council wants to do. Um, I, I mean, I respect your opinion and, you know.
Oh, because that isn't a closed session topic. We're not talking about the applicants, we're talking about the process. The process is the process. And, you know, if you advertise it publicly that it's going to close on the thirtieth, then we need to, you know, we can discuss it publicly. On why we're doing what we're doing now when it, when it hasn't actually closed. You know, that isn't something that the citizens shouldn't be privy to. This is discussion that should be said out in public, it's not, that's one thing, that's not a closed meeting topic. We're not talking about individual applicants, we're talking about the process and I'm saying, I'm saying that the process is still open, we're still receiving resumes. We should wait until it closes completely in order to discuss things.
Okay, well, you certainly have your your vote of whether you want to go into closed session at, uh, and, you know, like, so I respect your opinion. I, in my opinion, I would rather start the the process now, uh, because. I've looked at the the packet that we received and there are, in my opinion, highly qualified candidates in there. Uh, and, um, I will want to at least get started on it now. Uh, but that's my opinion, that will be my vote. Uh, you will vote however you want to vote and other council members will have, uh, their say. Uh, you know.
So, okay, so I guess that that that's what, that's what bothers me because you looked at, I mean, you said you've seen some highly qualified applicants right now. So anybody that comes in the second round, you're not really going to give them too much of a second look because you already seen the first round and you think some that you already picked. Are qualified for the position and that may be who you want to stick to, and it may be some that are even. Are qualified for the position and that may be who you want to stick to. Maybe some that are even more qualified than those that before, but you know. I'm just saying, I think we should take them all as 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 a group and give them all consideration at the same time. You know, when we discuss, because again, we're going to, we're going to be arguing for one or the other, and then, you know, when some people, when they support something, they're going to support it no matter what else comes through the pipe.
Okay, thank you.
I've seen that happen over and over again.
Thank you. Uh, but that's not true on my part. Uh, I've I've, you know. Interview the, a certain way, my, you know. In my experience, and I haven't disqualified anyone because I interviewed someone earlier versus later. Um, you know, we could talk about our process of uh, switching to um, having something open until it closes. As opposed to having it just wide open for two months. Uh, but you know, everyone has their vote of what they want to do, but certainly wouldn't disqualify anyone because they. Applied at a certain period versus another period. Councilwoman Jones?
Uh, that's uh, one of the reasons why I was real hesitant about second the motion because of the fact that was, I thought maybe we would. But what Mr. Harry is saying is uh, that we can't disc- that is public information to be able to talk about the process. Because I also feel like, you know, we should wait until we get all of the applicants and then go through them and and determine. Who we're going, uh, who's, well, I guess Ms. Schultz determines uh. Basic, from the basic, just reading the applications, who's qualified and gives us, I won't say it gives us the qualified ones, we, I think we get all of the applications.
No, no, you do, you get the qualified applicants.
Okay, so we're getting the, what what is considered qualified by the job position, by the position description. And by what we're applying, what we're asking for in in a, in a person.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so if we get, just getting all of the qualified persons through via those two uh, uh, pipelines. Then I think that we, I really believe that we should wait until we get all of the applicants and then sit down and look at them.
Okay. Um, and Ms. Schultz. When the ones that you provided for us, have you contacted them or?
No, I can't, with the ones that are out of the area. I contacted them to see, to let them know that we do not pay relocation, are they still interested? But I have not reached out to the ones that applied over a month ago to see if they're, to to see their um. If they, to see if they are still interested in the position, I can do that.
Okay. Uh. So I already have a second, so we'll go through the vote and, you know, respectfully, if you don't agree that we should move forward, uh, that's fine, you can vote no. Um, uh, and Ms. Schultz, you're saying that we, in your recommendation. Uh, that we could or should.
What I, what I say is, when I have a vacancy open longer than thirty days. I usually at least break up the cert into two certs. Because I don't know how many more you're going to get, if you at least start looking at them. Uh, you have a, not not a leg up on the next person, but you can see what is out there. Because you may not like any that you see in the first thirty days and say, well, I don't like what you gave me. I don't, if this is an example of what you're going to give me, open it up longer. So I don't know what in what area or which direction you want to go in. Um, so I, however you all want to do it, I I'd suggest strongly though. That we reach out or I reach back out if we're going to keep it open and not look at anything for another three weeks. Those who apply first, second, third, or fourth, or fifth, or sixth, or whomever applied early. If to see if they are still interested, interested in the position or if they have obtained employment elsewhere. Because there's no point of you having their names anymore if they're no longer interested.
Okay. Any other discussion by any other council members? Um, so with that. I take it the other part, port, uh, port, the other part of that was the uh, the strategic planning. Uh, and uh, team building uh, that we have postponed before that I wanted to discuss with you guys. Um, but that was the other part of the agenda. If you guys want to discuss that in the public, that's fine. But I was uh, suggesting that we go in a closed session to discuss that uh, as well. So. With that, I'm just going to go for the vote. If it fails, it fails, if it doesn't, it doesn't. Um. In more discussion, for once, when twice, all right. Uh, Council Clerk?
Councilwoman G L.
Upstain.
Councilman Harrison.
Right now?
Yeah, we just go in a closed session.
If we should go, and what are we going to go, close session for again? To talk about the?
Uh, strategic planning meeting uh, that was on the books before, um, uh, that we're putting back on the books. And uh, city manager candidates.
Is the strategic planning, is that the um, retreat thing? That's what that is?
Yes.
Um. Pass.
Councilman Herring?
No.
Councilwoman Jones?
No.
Vice President Ferguson?
Pass.
President Curtis?
Uh, yes.
Councilman Herring, I mean Harrison, I'm sorry.
No.
Vice President Ferguson?
Yes.
You have one extension, one, two, three no's. And two yeses, so if it fails.
All right, thank you. Uh, Ms. Schultz.
Yes, sir.
Uh. With your suggestion, you know, could you just reach out to the ones who've been waiting for quite some time? Uh, just to let them know that uh, once the position closes. Uh, then we'll meet and we'll move forward from there so that people can have. Uh, an expectation of just, and not just being just sitting in limbo.
I'll do that. Uh, first thing tomorrow will be an email. Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you very much. Um. With that. The time is eight fifty-eight, this meeting is now, sorry, Councilwoman Ferguson?
Mayor handles that? I don't know whether you saw it or not.
Yeah, we're done with, uh, the only thing that was up was the motion. So the, may across the reason why I did not come to you because we were admitted of a motion uh, to go into closed session, which didn't have anything to do with um. The mayor, uh, and there's nothing else on the agenda outside of the agenda. So with that, the time is eight fifty-nine, this meeting is adjourned.
Good evening.